All right, so let's get going. Before we begin, this is a reminder that this is also a remote meeting and teleconference using Zoom pursuant to 1 MRSA Section 43A. Welcome to the Sanford Planning Board Meeting of March 19, 2025. The meeting will now come to order. This is a public proceeding unless the board specifically votes to go into executive session. You have the right to hear everything that is being said and look at the exhibits that are offered. Please notify the chair if you aren't able to hear or see something. Please know that if any planning board members have potential conflicts of interest, of which they are aware, they will disclose the conflict prior to the board initiating a hearing or action on an application. All persons speaking will be asked to state your name and address and then proceed. At the sole discretion of the chair, public testimony may be limited to five minutes per speaker. For each item, the applicant will be asked to describe the project. Thereafter, the chair will ask proponents of the project to speak, followed by opponents, and then those who are neither for nor against, but who may want to ask a question or make a general comment. Everyone who wants will have an opportunity to speak to the board through the chair. Any questions must go to and through the chair, who will then decide at what point to either ask staff or the applicant to respond. The chair may wait until after testimony has concluded to seek answers to any questions that are raised by the public or board members. Please note that rudeness, uncivil behavior, clapping cheering, booing, et cetera, will not be tolerated, and if these behaviors occur, the chair at its sole discretion may terminate the hearing and reschedule for another date. In addition, the chair at its sole discretion will limit repetitious comments, though it is entirely appropriate for an individual to indicate that he or she agrees with the previous speaker. Prior to closing the public hearing, the chair will ask if there are any new comments. Then the applicant will be allowed to make a single rebuttal in response to the testimony which was provided. Once the public hearing portion of the meeting is closed, the chair will accept no additional public comment. However, the board at the sole discretion, uh, sorry. The board at the chair's discretion may ask the applicant or member of the public to respond to a question. This will not reopen public comment. Planning board decisions are based solely on whether an applicant has provided sufficient evidence to meet the requirements of local, state, and federal laws. In this regard, public testimony is most effective when it considers the impact of a project in light of Sanford subdivision, site plan, shore land, or zoning ordinances, and other relevant regulations. After the board discusses the merits of each project, it will vote on written findings of fact. Since the findings may substantially affect any appeals rights, and also as a matter of courtesy, the board asks that those attending the meeting not leave until the board has adopted the findings for the project you are interested in. After the planning board makes its final decision, any reconsideration by the board must be made at the next regularly scheduled meeting. If anyone wishes to appeal the board's final decision, he or she must do so within 30 days. The city's ordinance and comprehensive plan are available for viewing on the city's website and the Planning and Development Department's office at 919 Main Street. Remember, this is a public proceeding. You have the right to hear what and see what is happening, and we welcome public participation. All right, so the first item, old business file number 2025, Tac 09, Tac J30, Tac 47, Tac PS, Sanford Housing Authority is also just going to remain on the table? Okay? So the first item we will take up is new business file number 2025-11-K18-8-Alpha-1-A-S Withem Apartments. Can you orient us on this?
It's good evening, everybody. This is a project that came before you guys, but had a renewal a little over a year ago, got approved a little over two years ago, was in the works for a little bit before that. It's essentially the foundation next to Sherwin-Williams in Springvale, being converted into a two-unit building, a two-unit apartment building. It is here tonight for a lot line amendment that took place between two of the property owners that not directly related to this one, but because it's a subdivision, shows up on the subdivision plan. And also, they've made some slight modifications to the parking to address their previous condition of approval coming out of the previous approval. It went to site plan actually yesterday, and they were asked to do a few clarifications, which I believe he has done, and he will discuss.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, good evening. My name is Chris McDonald. I'm from BH2M in Gorham. I'm here tonight representing Coastal Oaks, and I have King Weinstein from Coastal Oaks on the line as well over Zoom. As Jamie described coming into this, this project has been before the board previously and received a site plan and subdivision approval back in April of 2023. It was then, the site plan was then requested to be extended by, for another year, and was granted so in 2020, April of 2024. So we come back to, before you guys tonight, to describe a few amendments to this plan. And I'll kind of, I've got, I've got a plan up on the, oh, thank you, up on the screen here. So for all intents and purposes, what we have is, is that we have the subject property really is the foundation that's located just off the edge of the Sherman Williams paint store parking lot. That piece of property was subdivided from the Karen Bruno parcel and from the, what is now the Anna and Hong Ho parcels, and created a subdivision. While it's not part of the actual subject lot for the site plan that we'll discuss in a moment, there was an eternal property line between Ho and Bruno that was subject to a lot line agreement. After the initial approvals back in 2023, those neighbors got together, reviewed the boundary line agreement, and realized that there were some additional features that needed to go onto the Bruno property. So let me zoom into this a little bit. So the lot line in question that was modified is this one that's right here, if you can see me chasing that on the screen. And originally, that was simply a straight property line from that corner to the back corner. But as we went through the finalizing of the property line agreement, the Brunos had decided that these trees that are along the property line, and then if I zoom way in here, there's also a non-potable well that's also along that property line. And the original, the original boundary line agreement had those features on the Ho side of that property line. So we've basically made some adjustments to that property line, just to make sure that those trees in that well ends up on Bruno's property. While we did that boundary line adjustment, we also reviewed for setbacks and things like that. So the jog in this property line really is to try to balance out the distance between the two buildings and try to maximize the setback between those two, which we end up having somewhere around 12 feet rather than the 10 that the zone calls for. So that's, that's kind of one of the first things that we're coming back with the amended subdivision plan for. For the site plan, I'll kind of pan over to that next plan. The site plan also was subject to a maintenance agreement between Coastal Oaks and 544 Main Street, who is the owners of the Sherman Williams parcel. And again, going through, finalizing the maintenance agreement, there were a number of changes made, basically highlighting what's permissible as far as use in the parking lot. And it also better defined the 20-foot right-of-way that extends through that parking lot to provide access to Coastal Oaks. And so really, there was, there was a bunch of changes in there between some lawyers that reviewed this, and we've had to make a few modifications to the plans around that, primarily, like I say, kind of showing the extents of the agreed-to right-of-way, and then also some notes about snow storage. And as far as snow storage goes, really, the upshot to that is, is that the owners of 544 wanted to make sure that the snow storage specific to the apartment buildings was managed on the apartment building property, whereas the right-of, 20-foot right-of-way that extends to that, that will all still be managed by the folks at 544. So last night, oh, I'm sorry, yesterday morning, rather, we had the Site Plan Review Committee. And during that meeting, we discussed the orientation of the parking, and a change that we had made from the initial application that we made in February to this plan was kind of reorienting the parking. Originally, the parking in front of the apartment building was kind of angled parking along the front, and looking at the options and the requirements around the right-of-way, it seemed to make the most sense to put the four parking spots with kind of two, with kind of, you know, two side by side, next to the parking bill, next to the apartment building, between Main Street and the apartment building. As we reviewed the options for that, I'll zoom in just a little bit here so we can see it. There's also, just, there's a, some grading that will need to occur in order for that to happen, so we're proposing a concrete block retaining wall. It's a fairly short retaining wall. We're looking at about two and a half foot tall, just to retain that impoundment. We're also, with this change, showing a little bit better spot for the snow storage. We've kind of shown some proposed grading to kind of push that slope back and to provide, you know, a decent place for snow to be able to push, be pushed through the back of those parking stalls. And the last thing to mention on this is, is also stormwater. We've considered stormwater for this, and we're proposing to relocate the catch basin that used to be at the front of the property. We're putting that to the rear of the property and grading those parking stalls so that stormwater will go into that infiltrating catch basin. And I think that covers the majority of the changes that we have made between here and the initial plan that was approved. Just very quickly to mention on this, the utilities have not changed as part of any of these amendments, so we're still proposing to bring the water from Main Street, kind of along the L-shaped portion of that property through the back. We're still proposing to connect a six-inch sewer to an existing private six-inch sewer, and we're still proposing to go with overhead, overhead electric. One last thing to mention as far as changes to this amended plan, now that we've kind of relocated the parking to the side, we are showing a, a walkway in front of the apartment building with just some access to the two front doors. And we're now also showing some landscaping around that as well. Previously, there just wasn't a lot of room on this site to do anything like that. And now we're showing some flowering bushes really between the walkway and the building to try to dress that up a bit. And then one other thing too, just following up on the Site Review Committee's comments from yesterday, was some additional notes on final conditions in, in the areas of the trenches. There are some kind of, you know, I guess emergent growth trees, you know, kind of some smaller diameter trees that are existing along the snowmobile trail. And unfortunately, given the nature of what's proposed here with the waterline trench and the sewer trench, we really don't have the ability to be able to replant those trees in that trench area. So really, what we've done here is we've called out for either grass in lawn, I'm sorry, lawn, grass for, to be maintained as lawn for areas of existing lawn, and then we're proposing grass for those areas that, that we're going kind of through tree line. But for those, we're calling for that to be more of a meadow condition. So rather than that being maintained as lawn or anything else, that'll be maintained more as a meadow to be mowed once or twice a year, really enough just to be able to knock down any sort of woody growth that may occur in that trench area. So with that, I think I've provided enough explanation. Happy to answer any questions you guys may have.
All right, thank you. I'm sure there'll be questions when we get to the deliberation piece of this, but before I open the public hearing, does anything else the staff would like to add?
Couple things to add, so there, I think Chris basically just touched on them, but they came up yesterday, Site Player Review Committee meeting, as far as an increase in landscaping on-site, a redesign of the parking. It's on. Lou. Okay, can you hear me now? Okay, great. I'll eat it. I believe Chris covered everything, however, just to reiterate, so a couple changes just happened basically today. And we are showing both the trees being replaced with a meadow condition on, over the trenches, a repositioned parking layout, so from the site that you guys received last Thursday. Some changes have been made, so just so we're clear on that. And we have an updated turning template for the fire truck to be able to access this site via the Sherwin-Williams parking lot. The easement language has all been updated, and so that is fine and ready to be developed. And I think that's it. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer them, and I do have a letter here also.
All right, thank you, Erin. Okay, I'll declare the public hearing open. If there's anybody who would like to speak as a proponent for this project? Any opponents? Anybody who would like to ask a question or make a general comment? I think this is where we could enter in the written.
I think so too. I'm not really sure if this is pro or against, but, so this is a letter that we received with the Planning Department from Lawrence Furbush. It states, "My name is Lawrence Furbush, and I am the Chair of the Sanford City Trails Committee. I am representing the committee, and I'm speaking on File 2025-11-K18-8A-1AS regarding the Withem Apartments. My particular concern is the trail that runs behind Sherwin-Williams and comes out on Withem Street. First, a little history. When the Sanford and Eastern Railroad closed in 1961, the rail bed reverted to the town. At that time, the state was considering building a bypass through town, and the town deeded the rail bed to the state. The state never followed through with the bypass. Then, a former Sanford Town Planner bought a section of the rail bed east of Main Street and sold it for development. Immediately, Hazen Carpenter and the newly-formed Sanford Trails Committee worked with the town for it to regain ownership from the state, and the rail bed was turned into what has become the Rail Trail, a major trail bisecting the town and later city. This trail has become the most-used and appreciated section of our city trails system. The Rail Trail runs unobstructed from the Lebanon Line to Main Street, and then from Withem Street to Shaw's Ridge, a short informal trail developed from Main Street running behind Sherwin-Williams and through two properties, K18-8A and K18-8C, coming out on Withem Street. It then runs down Withem Street a short way until it reconnects with the original rail bed. The Trails Committee's long-term goal is to come to some type of an arrangement with one or both of the condo associations in this area to allow the Rail Trail to revert back to, close to its original location. In the meantime, it is a major priority of the Trails Committee to keep access open so Rail Trail users can continue their travel uninterrupted. This very short section of trail was at one time used by ATVs, but they have since been banned. Currently, it is used only by walkers, bicyclists, and in the winter, snowmobilers. We are asking if, as part of your approval for this project, you clarify or formalize this short connecting trail and make some accommodation to retain it, either by a formal easement or some other permission or authorization for its use to continue. It is a shame that all those years ago, the sale of a section of the trail was ever allowed, but it can't be undone now. Therefore, it is critically important that the two large sections of the Rail Trail remain connected. You can see how important this short section of trail has become. Please help retain it. Thank you for your consideration. Lawrence Furbush."
Okay, thank you, Erin. Last calls, or anybody who would like to make a comment or ask a question? All right, let's declare the public hearing closed, and we will pick it up for discussion at the board level. Yes, please go ahead, Jim.
Ben, can you pull up my screen, please? Just want to make the board aware, the applicant for this property has added a note to the plan that is now zoomed in on that state's ATV trail to remain during construction. A proposed building coordinate with local ATV and snowmobile clubs during sewer installation. Do not install scent barrier, silt barrier, or on-trail or otherwise permanently block access. So this property owner owns a very short section, very short, but he has put on a subdivision plan that he will not block his section of the trail. So just wanted that known by you guys.
Great, thank you.
If I may for a moment on the snowmobile trail, back in the original 2023 application process for this, we, we actually did reach out to the snowmobile club, and there's something of a, I believe they called it a access permit or something like that, which is kind of an odd way to call something like that. But basically, what it was, was it was written permission for the snowmobile club to continue to access through that. And so as part of development of this project, we have been reaching out to the snowmobile club, at least anyway, and there's certainly an intention to maintain access through that trail. And, you know, as Jamie points out, we do on this, on this property, it kind of weaves a little bit along the property line, but most of the ATV trail is actually on the whole property for this. But again, in development of this project, we would only have limited closure time when we'd be crossing that trail with some of the utility connections, but otherwise would not be hindering use and maintenance of that.
Thank you.
Thanks, I just want to comment on that, on that, but at some point, if residents have a concern about the usage, would then the landowner be able to close that parcel at some point?
Yep.
That's what I want, and that's what, that's what people are asking, right? That's the concern. So during construction or when everything is looking good, feeling good, sure, but the concern is the long term. So is there anything that we can do to make sure that that's access to the town and the residents?
So again, on this plan, there's a note saying the trail to remain. There's a section that says during construction, they will also not block it, but the way this is worded, Mr. Weinstein, which is on Zoom, has committed that he will not block his section of the trail. Again, it's a very short section that he owns.
Sure.
But this plan is going to certify that he's saying he's not going to block his 10 feet of it.
Now, on the flip side, I would argue that as a landowner, we would not want to ever tie somebody's hands to say that in the future, you can't close this trail, right?
And actually, I'm gonna, Erin just corrected me rightfully so. This is actually a subdivision plan for all three parcels.
Right.
So I'm actually not positive the two other landowners know it, but this note actually is for all three parcels, which is all of the trail on this master person. So this note protects that indirectly, but indirectly protects it.
That's great.
But it's still private property.
It would be better if there was an easement in place, but we have not thus far requested.
Because this trail goes like within five feet of that, this building there.
It does.
Yep. It wouldn't, I mean, because you could still come back for a site plan change later if something arose. Yeah.
Yeah.
I've had conversations with the Trail Committee. They're working on a few potential options here. One of them would be getting formal, I mean, they would love to have a formal easement from all the landowners that this affects. One of them is to relocate the trail back closer to where it originally was. So they are working on a few options, and for now, I think this provides a little bit of protection.
Was the stormwater taken care of? I know Matt had some concerns.
The stormwater analysis was still valid. They didn't change the size of the infiltration catch basin at all. It was just the location that needed to be revised based on the revised parking setup. So that's all taken care of. He actually added some notes on there as well in regards to the snow storage and making sure that doesn't block off any, any drainage paths this time of year is when you see that. The snowbanks are still in place, but we get some rain, and then, you know, it basically creates a pool. So that will be avoided based on the note on the plan, and it'll be open drainage to the infiltration catch basin, so all good.
One other? Chris, trash pickup? I mean, obviously, there's a big parking lot there, but what are we going to do there?
Trash pickup is proposed to be municipal with the understanding that that would have to go to the street to be collected.
Ah, to the street?
Yep.
Sure.
Very good question. Yeah, the, of course, with, with how tight and small this project is, we really don't have room for dumpsters or anything like that, so.
Right.
Yeah. But nope, that's the understanding, is that the, yeah, the, that the cans would have to be dragged to the, dragged to the street.
Thanks.
May I, Mr. Chair? I'm shooting off the cuff, which is never a good thing, but I think there's just a little bit of concern with the comment you just made, that municipal trash pickup at the street. Your easement is for ingress and egress only, not for trash pickup. So I think you, your client might need to discuss that with the landowner to make sure that they agree upon that, because the trash would be within their ownership.
I'm sorry, just, just to clarify, the trash pickup would be brought to Main Street. So not, so we wouldn't have the expectation that the trash trucks would be going through the easement. We would have the expectation that the trash would be picked up along the curb on Main Street.
But the cans are actually going to be on private property. They can't be within the right-of-way, which means it would be part of the easement. Just, again, I'm not saying it is a problem. I think that's just something you might have to work out with the owners of Sherwin-Williams property.
Okay.
Or they could walk it over to their frontage on Main Street.
Yeah, right, and that's, that's the intention is, is that it would go in, in the right-of-way of Main Street rather than in the parking lot or in the right-of-way itself. And I mean, my understanding is, is that, that there's curbside pickup along Main Street.
I believe there's curbside pickup along Main Street, yes. I think what I was just trying to tell Jamie, technically, this parcel does have frontage on Main Street. It's just where the waterline comes in and not necessarily adjacent to where people will be living. So if there becomes an issue with the easement and putting trash out within the Sherwin-Williams easement, your residents have the option to walk their trash to their portion of Main Street, which is about 10 feet wide.
Okay.
And again, I shouldn't have opened my mouth. That's actually potentially problematic because that 10-foot section of frontage has access easement for another parcel that probably can't be blocked by trash as well.
Right, so parking lot.
So again, I'm not trying to make this a problem tonight. I simply want it on record that you'll need to make sure that where you place your trash cans is okay.
I'll, I'll speak with the applicants about that and just make sure that prior to occupancy, that trash removal is discussed with the owners of 544, and make sure that there's an appropriate agreement to make sure that that's taken care of appropriately.
So it looks like the city owns essentially up to the back of the sidewalk, and trash cans has to be behind the sidewalk, is what I'm saying.
Okay, I see.
So this would be something we'd probably want to add as a condition?
That they address trash pickup.
Yeah.
I'm not totally concerned with it, because you can still do private, you know, someone can, yeah, and you can also bring it to the dump.
Right, but if the intent is to use municipal pickup, this has to be figured out.
If the applicant commits to provide and trash pickup either by private collection or potentially public collection if allowed, then that could also suffice.
Yeah.
If he, if they commit to either or, and the owner is on Zoom.
I'm sorry, King, can you, are you able to take it off of mute?
Yes, I think we would opt for the public, and if there's no way to do that, then we would do it privately, but we'd opt for the public. And I think there's pretty much agreement with Sherwin-Williams, although maybe they didn't specifically define the right-of-way for the two trash cans.
I think we're good.
All right. Anything else from the board on this? Okay. Do we have draft findings?
This condition is met because the proposed subdivision meets all minimum dimensional requirements, performance standards, and all other applicable land use regulations outlined in Chapter 275.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Seven zero.
280-16-7A, utilization of the site. This condition is met because the proposed site plan reasonably uses the site.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Seven zero.
275-10-35, traffic conditions, and 280, after 280, Article 16, Section 7- 275-10-35, traffic conditions, and 280, after 280, Article 16, Section 7B, access into the site, 7C, access into the site, 7D, internal vehicular circulation, and 7E, pedestrian circulation. These standards are met because the development will not create hazards to vehicular or pedestrian traffic.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Seven zero.
Group two, Chapter 275, Article 10, Section 31, pollution, 32, sufficient water, 33, impact on existing water supply, 34, soil erosion, 36, sewage disposal, Section 37, solid waste, 38, impact on aesthetics in open spaces, historic areas, wildlife habitat, and shoreline access, 42, impact on groundwater quality or quantity, 43, floodplain management, 44, sorry, 45, stormwater management, 46, recreation in open space areas, 47, phosphorus impacts on great ponds, and, Chapter 280, Article 16, Section 7F, stormwater management, 7G, erosion control, 7H, water supply, 7I, sewage disposal, 7J, utilities, 7K, natural features, 7L, groundwater protection, 7M, exterior lighting, 7N, solid waste disposal, 7O, landscaping, and 7R, buffering. These standards are met because the applicant has provided adequate provisions to meet the standards.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Seven zero.
Group three, Chapter 275, Article 10, Section 41, impact on water quality and shoreline, 44, identification of freshwater wetlands, 48, spaghetti lots, and, Chapter 280, Article 16, Section 7P, shoreline relationship, and 7S, airport encroachment. These standards are not applicable, the applicant is not proposing any development, this standard is not applicable.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Seven zero.
Group four, 275-10-40, financial and technical capacity, and 280-16-7Q, technical and financial capacity. These standards are met, the applicant has demonstrated adequate technical and financial capacity.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Seven zero. All right, do we have a draft motion?
We do. The planning board accepts the information in the March 18, 2025 summer report, grant the requested waivers, and find the proposed application file 2025-11-K18-8A-1-P to reflect a new boundary line agreement between the owners of K18-8A and K18-8C, and reflect amendments to the site plan of K18-8A-1, has satisfied the requirements of Article 6 of the subdivision ordinance and Article 16 of the zoning ordinance, subject to the submission of information and conditions described below. And that would only be the standard conditions of approval, number two, performance guarantee, number three, AutoCAD submission, number four, signed recorded plat, number six, inspection fiasco, number seven, pre-construction meeting, and number nine, alteration of plans.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Actually, do you have one correction? Sorry. The file number is 2025-11-K18-8A-1-AS.
Motion to approve with correction.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Seven zero. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I meant to say that yesterday.
All right, moving on to our next new business item, file number 2025-TAC06, TACJ27, TAC4, TACFS, Stackpole Court, final subdivision. While Aaron is setting up things, Jamie, could you orient us on this one, please?
So this is a final subdivision approval for Stackpole Court. This has come before you for preliminary, it's a 12-unit multifamily building on a vacant lot on Stackpole Court. It came out of site plan with some items of discussion. I, I think there is one, one item still pending that I'm hoping we can get resolved tonight, which we'll get into after the public hearing, but it's, it's in pretty good shape with maybe one item still pending.
All right, thank you.
Hi, I'm Sean Millivanic, I'm the owner of LSM Properties LLC, I just want, I'll be the guy responsible for constructing this project, and also the guy responsible for managing the project after it's constructed. We're very excited to bring this into our family of multifamily properties, we have a few here and there, so on that note, I'm going to hand it over to Craig Burgess from Acorn Engineering, he'll get into nitty-gritty, thank you.
Good evening, Craig Burgess with Acorn Engineering. Proposed project really hasn't changed a whole lot since the board last saw it, it's still a 12-unit structure, two-story, with four on each level, there will be a basement level with, with four units as well, and that will be like a partial daylight, so, for, for egress. As part of the December resubmission, I believe the board was able to see a lot of the changes that we made in response to the, to the staff comments that we, we received in early December. That comment response letter was part of Section M of the final application, and I'm available to answer any of tho, any questions concerning those changes. As part of the final application and plans that you didn't see up until as part of this submission, there really were minor changes, really related to water, and really just minor changes related to the site. So the plan and the project that's in front of you tonight is really what the board was able to review at that December meeting. We are requesting a waiver for parking, and the City of Sanford requires 21 parking spaces, we're requesting the waiver to, to reduce that down to 17 parking spaces, and we believe that that will be able to support this project. As Sean mentioned, he'll, he'll be responsible for managing the parking, there are eight double stacked, and those will be assigned to one unit each, and so Sean will pay specific attention to managing that parking to make sure that the number of cars will fit within the parking lot that's designed as part of this project. So with that, I'll open it up to the board for any comments, thanks.
Okay, thank you, we'll probably bring you back up and have questions as we, once we get past the public hearing. All right, before I open the public hearing, is there any additional staff comments?
I don't have a comment for the public here, and I'm going to reserve it for a discussion after.
Okay, great. Okay, we'll declare the public hearing open, is there anyone who would like to speak as a proponent of this project? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this project? Anybody who would like to ask a question or make a general comment? Any final, anybody else who would like to ask a question, make a comment? Okay, I'll declare the public hearing closed, and we'll pick it up for discussion on our end. So I think the, there is the one, one issue that I think we still have to address is the, is the fire chief's concern, right?
Yes, that is correct. So coming out of site plan, there was a condition that applicant works with the Public Works Department to have no parking signs installed on both sides of Stackpole Court. Matt, Preventure has been in communication with Matt Hill, the Public Works Director, and I don't believe the Public Works Director is in favor of installing no parking signs on both sides of Stackpole Court. We talked with the fire chief today, the fire chief is pretty adamant that no parking signs or a method to prevent parking on Stackpole Court is enacted. He's gone out on several occasions to try to get the fire apparatus in the street, and there's always cars parked such that the fire truck can't get down Stackpole Court. So with essentially four-story building, three and a half stories out of the ground, he strongly feels he needs the, the tower truck, which is our biggest truck, the aerial equipment access into the site, and feels the only way that can happen is with no parking on Stackpole Court. I believe today Craig provided some turn-in templates that is almost there showing the fire truck gaining access in, I can pull it up in just a second, but there is one tiny little spot that the, the back of the truck is slightly interfering with parked cars, and that is assuming that cars park where they're supposed to. In all of the history of the fire department trying to determine if this is something we could work with, the cars have not been parked such that the fire truck can gain access. So fire chief is still strongly recommending no parking, so the reason why me and Mr. Preventure was almost late coming up is we was in discussion downstairs, I, we jointly, Aaron included, thought of potentially, instead of saying no parking, signing it "fire lane," which means you can't park there. Matt tried to call Mr. Hill, he was not available by phone, Matt, was you able to get in touch with him at all?
Yeah, yeah, I was, he responded that, that he's okay with, with basically the restriction that the, the fire chief is asking for. I guess the, the reason for the discussion in the first place was, in our ordinance, it specifically calls out some widths of road that, that parking is allowed to be prohibited. This, Stackpole doesn't necessar, doesn't meet that, it, it meets being able to sign one side of the road as no parking, but not both, but what could achieve that is a, is a fire lane, I think that it, basically, we don't feel comfortable just putting up, the, the Department of Public Works doesn't feel comfortable putting up just no parking signs without it being clear that it's for fire purposes, so I think a fire lane does achieve that, we would be, we'd be in support of that, for sure.
So part of the issue with Stackpole Court is, up on the screen, you'll see that it's, it's not a straight road. It's, it starts out a little bit wide, it jogs around an entrance, it then jogs again, so it's not like the standard typical public street. It's essentially at one point, something that was, in my opinion, a driveway that got turned into a street over the, over the decades. So it's not like a normal street that fire trucks can easily traverse, because of the uniqueness of it, the fire chief feels the, the, the no parking is, is warranted. So coming out of site plan, we had the condition of no parking, is your applicant okay with installing fire lane signs?
Would that be on both sides?
It would be.
Would be? That's, that's what we'd have to do, that's something else we'd have to do.
So you're okay with that?
If that's what's needed, yeah, I'd be fine with that.
Okay. So I believe the fire chief would be accepting of fire lane signs in lieu of the no parking signs, that was his original condition, so I am actually comfortable, if they are comfortable, moving forward with the installation of fire lane signs in lieu of no parking signs.
Can we just add that as a condition, that that, that would be added, and then make sure that the chief was okay with the placement of those?
Yep.
Jim, just one, whereabouts would that start and end on this street?
So there's already a state statute that says you can't park within a certain distance of the corner, so essentially, they'll have to be placed, you could work with the Public Works Department on proper placement of signs, I won't pretend I know how close they're supposed to be and the best spots to put them. So you are still installing them on public right-of-way, so you could work with the Public Works Department on proper placement.
Okay, is that just up to the, the property, the end of my property, or down the road, further into it?
I think it's going to be to the end of your property, not the beginning.
Okay.
Author out there, the other option was to potentially widen the public street, but I don't know that that is something the applicant is willing to do, and that would allow potentially for more on-street parking, but we'd have to run that past the fire chief again, as well. So if that was something that you were counting on having?
Yeah, I'd probably, we're just putting signs in, if that's okay.
Are there other houses on Stack, Stackpole Court? So there is, there is going to be a private residence that would be affected by this fire lane. So the, the issue with turning the fire truck on is there is a private residence on the corner of Brook and Stackpole Court that regularly parks at least one, sometimes two vehicles on Stackpole Court. So that is going to be a direct impact to that abutter. That abutter is not present tonight, there have been a few abutters that have come the last two meetings for this case, but it got postponed at request of the applicant due to scheduling, they are not here tonight unfortunately, I would love for them to, to be here to hear that this motion is essentially going to wipe out their on-street parking.
But if there, there are other houses on Stack, Stackpole Court, wouldn't the fire trucks still have issues getting in there?
So currently, Stackpole Court has a house on the end, on the corner of Brook and Stackpole.
That's it.
And then it has a garage structure kind of directly across the street from this development, and then there is a second driveway for a house behind this development that can also access it off of River Street. So it, it provides direct access to one house, one storage structure, and secondary access to a second house currently.
And I believe the concern is more about turning into this driveway off of Stackpole, it's not necessarily.
Yeah, I'm just, if there's other houses on Stack, Stackpole Court, it would still have a problem if people are parked.
Right, good point.
So it seems like no parking. I'll work for DPW.
Yeah, I would just encourage the board to think about the precedent that is set, and if that's okay with everyone, then that's okay. We're going to continue to have more development in Sanford, and we have narrow streets, and people have come to rely on parking on the street. As it continues, we'll probably have more and more abutters show up, and so, in this instance, the fire chief has been pretty adamant that he needs more access, and making it a fire lane seems to be the path forward, that would be the precedent that we're setting.
And I'll agree with Aaron's statement, but I'll reiterate what I said before, this is a unique street. This is not like many other public streets in Sanford. So it is setting a precedent that proper fire department access needs to be warranted, and sometimes that might require fire lane or no parking to be installed, but it's not saying that every development coming forward, we're going to lose on-street parking, because this, this street, I think everybody can agree, is a unique layout.
Who would enforce the parking? The police?
Correct.
Right.
The police department feels most comfortable enforcing no parking in areas where there are signs that say no parking.
I think I know what that means?
Or a fire lane would, would count as.
Or a fire lane, okay, thank you.
A fire lane is actually more restrictive than no parking in general.
Sure.
I, I actually feel a police department, no, it's, it's hard, because a fire lane on private property, a police department can't enforce, but a fire lane on public property, a police department can enforce, so, no parking signs in private property, they can't enforce type of things, so.
Right.
Where this is public property, I think our police department should feel comfortable enforcing it, should they need to.
So it don't, it sounds like there's a path forward for this particular property, and if everyone that has jurisdiction over the driveway, getting in there, life safety, emergency, not going to oppose it. What you did though, say, Aaron, was interesting in that, we, before this ever gets the planning board to decide, like, is this inappropriate for the next projects, are they appropriate for the location that people are asking to put a building? So that you're not testing, or challenging, or changing the rest of the dynamics. Again, this particular project seems like it has enough support from the different municipalities, and that's fine, but... But in the future, putting something that may not be appropriate, and for us to be considering changing a lot of things to make it fit, as opposed to something that would fit the current location, would be a lot easier, and, well, a lot easier for us to deal with.
I appreciate that comment, but I'm just going to remind everybody that Sanford is in its current evolution of transitioning from a large town to a city. In that transition, we are going to be, we are going to see different development trends. We are going to be taken out of our comfort level. To evolve into a city, it does mean that things are going to be different in the future than they were yesterday.
Yeah.
And, well, I mean, it's a topic we have later on the agenda, is to talk about broader parking, which we know is a big problem in this city. This is, so this may be a unique street in its shape and its dimensions, but we have a lot of streets that are very difficult to get down, especially when there's snow piled up on the side of them, not even driving a fire truck. So there's many other issues, so I definitely appreciate the precedence, the argument, as well as the fact that this is a unique street. So, yeah, go ahead, Chase.
I think the other thing that's huge here is, no matter what you put for a building, whether it's a single-family house here, and there's other houses on the road, there's still access concerns. If the applicant, especially in the future, there's something that they can do on their property to mitigate the concern, even if it's removing units, I'm not for punishing the whole street, you know, just so that it squeezes as many units as possible, but that can, that issue with the fire truck's going to exist no matter what's built here.
So, in this particular case, if this was one level lower, then you wouldn't need the same truck, and therefore you wouldn't have the same restrictions. Am I right or wrong?
That's, that's-
Misguided at best, I would say, because we can't determine which truck shows up in an emergency call.
Okay.
And we only have a certain number of trucks.
Yeah.
So if the tower truck is closest, the tower truck shows up. So we actually do require all applicants to use the largest truck and prove that it can access the site.
Oh, because at the beginning, it was, it was, I thought I heard you say-
It's more important because of the-
Plus of the two and a half stories.
So because it's essentially three and a half stories, we have to get the tower truck there.
Got it.
Even if it's not first available, it needs to arrive. Whereas a single-family, if the tower truck is there, I mean, the fire department wants the tower truck there no matter what. Every fire operation has roof ventilation, the safest way to do that is with the tower truck. So they want it there every time, but if, in a limited case, it can't get there, they can, they can pull a 20-foot ladder off the truck and, and ventilate the roof the old-fashioned way, if need be, on a single-family. They can't on a multi-story like this.
Yeah. Thanks for clarifying.
All right. Anything else outside of the, go ahead, Lenny?
Go ahead, take a slightly different direction.
I was just going to ask about the design of the building and the appearance of it. Do you have any rendition of what it would look like?
There should have been renderings in the, at the tail end of the plan set that was submitted. I don't, it might have been a separate PDA.
It might have been a proof. Yeah, you can go back in the Google Drive if you want.
So then, as far as the other, another question before you get into that was where you had one of your light posts in, in a, in areas, seemed like a, maybe a oversight?
Sorry, can I get a second?
Oh, wait, oh, wait.
This is pretty much the same as it was before. The design hasn't changed any?
Yeah, no real changes. As, as part of the preliminary, one of the changes was the front entry, just, that was one of the comments that we addressed, as well as a couple planting pots in the front.
There you go.
Is there like something over the, over that door? Is there like a canopy or something over there, or, okay. Like a vinyl canopy, a ward, or?
A siding, sir?
Yeah, it looks like something over the doorway.
Roof?
No, is there a name of the building? What is that?
Be able to zoom in on that, too.
I can't, I can't.
Yeah.
It just says opening.
It just says open, okay. So there's nothing there, it's flat, just doorway, okay. And what's the color of the building? Just curious.
Gray, light gray.
Light gray, okay.
All right, I just have a couple more clarifying about the fire lane. Are you talking about, like, painting on the road, the, with the hash marks, no parking, or literally just putting signs up?
Signs up, because if, if we stripe it, then that is a forever maintenance thing that never happens properly. So the signs are, I would love both, but I'm not going to make somebody stripe it because it's not going to be maintained, so. I think the chief would be okay with just signage.
Lenny, were all your questions answered?
I think so, yeah.
There's no, what was I trying to think? Not much, there's no landscaping around there, there's not really much.
There's a fair amount.
Yeah, as part of, yeah, the plan set included a landscape plan.
Yeah.
I'm just looking at where we're getting more denser development in the downtown, how it's going to look and how it's going to fit in with the existing, existing development in the area.
See you, Lenny.
So on the screen right now is L-1-0, which is the landscape plan, and there's some larger trees out in the back with some more decorative plantings around the parking lot and between the walkway and the building. And then one large tree at the front of the site.
And there's a picnic table in there for recreation.
We also included this plan here, which shows the proximity of all the public parks around this area.
Todd, you were, you're good?
Yeah, I'm good. There's, there's, there's a lot of effort put in here, and it-
No, I just wanted, you, you were trying to ask a question earlier, just wanted to make sure you were all set.
All right. This is just an observation, just where you put, there's a K-turn backup area where the, like, the waste truck might back up and turn back around, yes, and then you have a pole light right in there, am I right? So where it's, where it's hatched on the left-hand side, and you have pole light right on that spot, is that, if I were a developer, I would just be concerned about that being subject to damage. Put more, possibly put that in the grass, but-
So the reason why we didn't put that in the grass is, at that point, it's too close to the property line.
Got it.
And it's very difficult to prevent the illumination levels from creeping over that property line. So that light pole will be, will have-
Raised, raised pedestal.
Yeah. And we also included a light pole, there was a comment from the planning board by the, by the dumpster area.
I remember that, we brought that up, too. All right.
I have one more.
Okay, go ahead.
Going back to the, the fire lane. Can we make the motions so that, you know, the fire lane's the option, but then also have, or another satisf, you know, another option, to the satisfaction of the Fire Chief, just in case some other option pops up, so they don't have to come back just because of not putting in the signs?
If that's what the board wants, we can definitely add that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't-
If he's satisfied with the fire lane, why would we need another option?
I think it was more of, if they came up with another creative option between now and installing fire lane signs, that's what you're saying?
Yeah.
Just to leave the door open?
Yeah.
But one has to happen.
Yeah.
Fire Chief has to be satisfied.
Do you want that as a condition of approval?
Well, we're already making the-
It's already going to be a condition of approval to have the fire lane, the fire lane signs, so by putting another statement in there saying, or alternative to the satisfaction of-
Yeah.
I think that is a good idea because this is a public road. And so if, in the future, Public Works decides to come in and repave Stackpole Court, they can decide to make it wider themselves. In which case, the Fire Chief might decide there's enough room, and we could remove the fire lane signs without having to bring the applicant back in for a sign change.
That's what I was thinking, too, because even if a neighbor came up with a solution, that remediated the issue.
Right. If, if it's the neighbors that are most affected, they might be the ones that are willing to come in and, and pay to widen the road as well. There's other options out there, I guess, so.
Good suggestion. All right, any other comments?
I have just, just to make you guys, and the applicant aware, one of my conditions is address concerns raised in the Sanford Water District's memo, so they've addressed them all. There is one small detail of a thrust block that was shown incorrectly that needs to be corrected. The Water District said it's not a big deal, they don't want it to hold up the project or anything, but I am generally leave that condition just so that that note gets clarified on the plan. And then also, one of the conditions coming out of site plan was to update the space and bulk standards block on sheet C-10 with the correct zone listed, so they did that, but it is now showing, and it probably did before and I didn't see it, but under lot coverage, it says 29% proposed, and we are way over 29% lot coverage. So just, just correct that.
Okay.
I think it might be like 71, and you put the wrong, wrong number.
I think it was looking at just the building.
Oh, okay. So just, just a clarifying comment.
All right, anything else from staff? Okay, do we have staff findings?
I do. 275-10-39, conformance with other regulations. This condition is met because the proposed subdivision meets all minimum dimensional requirements, performance standards, and all other applicable land use regulations outlined in Chapter 275 and 280.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Seven zero.
280-16-7A, utilization of the site. This is met because the proposed site plan reasonably uses the site.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Seven zero.
Group one, 275-10-35, traffic conditions, and Chapter 280, Article 16, Sections 7B, access to the site, 7C, access into the site, 7D, internal vehicular circulation, and 7E, pedestrian circulation. These standards are met because the development will not create hazards to vehicular or pedestrian traffic.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Seven zero.
Group two, Chapter 275, Article 10, Section 31, pollution, 32, sufficient water, 33, impact on existing water supply, 34, soil erosion, 36, sewage disposal, 37, solid waste, 38, impact on aesthetics, open spaces, historic areas, wildlife habitat, and shoreline access, 42, impact on groundwater quality or quantity, 43, floodplain management, 45, stormwater management, 46, recreation and open space areas, and 47, phosphorus impacts on great ponds, and, Chapter 280, Article 16, Section 7F, stormwater management, G, erosion control, H, water supply, I, sewage disposal, J, utilities, K, natural features, L, groundwater protection, M, exterior lighting, N, solid waste disposal, O, landscaping, and R, buffering. These standards are met because the applicant has provided adequate provisions to meet the standards.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Seven zero.
Group three, Chapter 275, Article 10, Section 41, impact on water quality and shoreline, 44, identification of freshwater wetlands, and 48, spaghetti lots, and, Chapter 280, Article 16, Section 7P, shoreline relationship, and S, airport encroachment. These standards are not applicable because the applicant is not proposing any development. The standard is not applicable.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Seven zero.
Group four, 275-10-40, financial and technical capacity, and 280-16-7Q, technical and financial capacity. The standard is met because the applicant has demonstrated adequate technical and financial capacity.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Seven zero. All right, move a draft motion.
The planning board accepts the information in the February 4, 2025 summer report. Grant the requested waivers and find application number 2025-06-J27-4-FS. To construct a 12-unit multifamily building, along with associated site improvements, has satisfied the requirements of Article 6 of the subdivision ordinance and Article 16 of the zoning ordinance, subject to the submission of information and conditions described below. By April 19, 2025, unless other arrangements are made with the planning department, provide five copies of revised plans to the planning, of revised plans, that adequately respond to issues raised in review, which are part of the following conditions. A, applicant works with the Public Works Department to have fire lane signs installed on both sides of Stackpole Court, or an alternative option to the satisfaction of the Fire Chief. Is that good? B, address all concerns raised in the Sanford Water District's memo. C, update space and bulk standards block on sheet C-10 with the correct lot coverage listed. And then, standard conditions of approval, number two, performance guarantee, number three, AutoCAD submission, number four, signed recorded plat, number five, outside agencies. Matt, is there outside agencies on this one? Okay, scratch number five, please. Number six, inspection fiasco, number seven, pre-construction meeting, number eight, landscaping performance guarantee, and number nine, alteration of plans.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Seven zero. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks.
Okay, so moving on to other business, Jamie has a couple things he wants to discuss with us. One thing is on sidewalks, internal to subdivisions.
Yes, I actually added that, if you don't mind.
No, go ahead.
Um, this is a topic that comes up often when we are reviewing active subdivision applications, but I was hoping to get some clarification from the board so that when we're having these conversations, like at pre-application meetings, we know kind of where to tell, or what to tell applicants. At the moment, I'm currently telling them, the planning board decides, you know, sidewalks are required on both sides of the street, within the growth area, the planning board can waive that to one side or no sides, and they can change the material. That's how we've been presenting it, pretty much since I started, I think. Part of the concern is that that is the requirement when there's a street, and sometimes there's not a street, there's a driveway, and the driveway can lead very far into a site and have a lot of different units further back into a lot. And so I think, for the most part, we've been operating that those developments still need a sidewalk, they need some sort of pedestrian access point. I guess I'm just wondering how you all feel about different elements of the sidewalk, like, does it need to be concrete? Does it need to maybe match the grade of a road? We don't really have required grades for sidewalks, or for paths, for that matter. Sometimes we approve, the board approves a path instead of a sidewalk. When a sidewalk is attached to a street, you know, we make them match the grade of the street, and we have required maximum grades for streets, whether they're going to be publicly accepted or not. So in that instance, we know that the sidewalk isn't going to be, you know, a luge during the winter. It's going to be at a, at a fairly gradual slope of, the maximum's 10%. We've had some applicants come in and propose different alterations within their subdivisions, and I wasn't sure if the board had any thoughts as far as what we should be requiring.
Come on, somebody's got to have an opinion on this. We talk sidewalks like-
I know.
I'll take the unpopular opinion that, in a lot of cases, I don't believe sidewalks are appropriate. In a lot of the cases, in a lot of the proposals that we've had, there's been, the subdivision's a minor subdivision, so three or less lots connecting to a road that you don't want to encourage pedestrian access on. to encourage pedestrian access on. We have had a couple of those.
Real quick, a minor subdivision can have up to 10 lots.
Hmm.
The ones we've seen have had three or four.
Well, no, minor...major subdivision's over three lots.
Major's over 10.
The only difference is...
Minor subdivision road can only have three.
That's a...
A private way.
A private way, okay.
Yeah. This is another option, like on a private way.
Yeah.
If we require a sidewalk...
But if there's a sidewalk present, then yes, connect it. You know, connect the development to the sidewalk. But like in a lot of the cases that we've had, it's been hard...there's been always a situation that's weird. So it's been hard to quantify.
Well, and then also, to that point, the problem is, is we're asking the developers to put in a sidewalk that doesn't go anywhere.
Yeah.
Right? In many cases, the city has...we're not putting sidewalks in. Like, we're investing in the roads, and I understand, we're in budget season, right? Everybody's up in arms about how much taxes are going to be and how much we're spending. So do we really want to spend money on sidewalks? But on the other hand, we're putting in sidewalks in some of these developments because they're in the growth zone, but they don't go anywhere, right? There's no future where there is...where the city is actually making those investments and putting in sidewalks to connect to.
Right.
With the exception of, I know that there's potentially one coming on to Route 4.
Yeah. Because, I mean, these sidewalks, it's not cheap. Like, in a lot of cases, it's a six figures for sidewalks. You know, I know someone who had to put a sidewalk in front of their business, and it was 100 to 200 feet wide, and it was $45,000, and that was 15 years ago. And so to have, you know, when you look at requiring them to spend that much money, it really has to make sense.
Now, on the flip side, I think that there have been some where we've had the discussion because of pedestrian safety.
Thank you.
Right? And I think that those are the cases where, for example, Jagger Mill Road. When we have...when we have...we don't want kids walking on Jagger Mill Road. People fly down that road. There is no shoulder where you had a development where the one housing lot was split from the other ones. That one made sense. So...
Yeah.
But where we have a development that is out in the middle of nowhere but happens to be in a growth zone, we require a sidewalk, but we don't...we're not putting in sidewalks. And I get it, you know? If we don't start putting in sidewalks 100 feet at a time, you're never going to have sidewalks. But on the other hand...
The city's never going to put sidewalks in to connect with it.
Well, never say never. Again, I mentioned earlier that we're evolving from a town to a city. In order to become a real city, we need pedestrian friendliness. To have pedestrian friendliness, we need more sidewalks. So while it's not in this year's budget, and I can guarantee you it's not next year's budget either, never say never. Sanford is evolving rapidly at this point.
Go ahead.
You know where I'm going with this, but...
I would just say, you know, the city is currently spending, has plans to spend millions of dollars on pedestrian infrastructure. This is stuff that wasn't built years ago when it could have been, and now taxpayers are on the hook for it, and we are paying for it. I think this stuff needs to be planned out when we plan out developments. And it needs...I understand it's expensive for developers, but sooner or later, we are going to need the infrastructure, and somehow, somebody's going to end up paying for it. I'm not the best person to decide how sidewalks are supposed to be built, or how wide they're supposed to be, or, you know, how high they're supposed to be, but I think it's important to have that discussion.
And, thank you. I also think that a sidewalk shouldn't be predicated on whether it connects to a street if it's in a new development. It's the safety...it's conditions in the development itself. How wide is that road? How fast are people going to go on that particular road? And is it safe to walk on that road? Is a walkway necessary or not? I don't think it should be determined, well, it doesn't connect to anything. It's actually, how does people live in that development at that moment, safely walking versus walking in the street?
The gravel path.
Regardless, you just want them off the...I don't want...I don't. But it's people that are walking...you don't want them...have them walking in the street all the time. It may not be safe at night when cars are coming in. And I don't know, it depends on the situation, but it shouldn't be based on the road, the walkway doesn't connect to anything. It's how are people walking in this 10-unit development with or without a sidewalk with cars? And sometimes it could be fine. Some...maybe it is needed. So I would...that's the basis.
That's the basis, and also, I'd like to think about a parcel with like 100 units on it, and there's a drive...it's a driveway. It's not a road. So the ordinance standards are tied to road, right? And where there's a new road being built, then the sidewalks have to go in. So in a normal subdivision, let's say, if they're building out a private way or a road, and they're putting 10 lots in, like we saw with the...we had this discussion with the Gilmett Street.
Yeah.
Then we have the requirement in the ordinance, and it clearly says that you can waive it, the requirement for a sidewalk. If it's an internal subdivision to a large parcel, and they're connecting multiple multifamily buildings, would you like staff to basically apply the same standards that would apply if it was a road, requiring that they would have to put in a sidewalk or bring it to you for a waiver? Or because it's a driveway, do you feel that it doesn't apply?
I would say yes, because if we're talking about pedestrian safety, if you have 100 units on it, I'm...I still want to be able to waive it, and I still want to put the emphasis on the developer to tell us why they don't need it.
Right.
Yeah.
And I think instead of having a conversation of, it's either all or nothing, like currently the ordinance says two sides of the road. Maybe a potential stopgap solution is to say it's on one side of the road, because there's a lot of big municipalities that don't have sidewalks on both sides of the street. Sidewalk on one side of the street might be safer than nothing at all. So these are all waivable options. Developers have told us over the years that they don't like unknowns. So a waivable option is an unknown to them. If I'm a developer and I'm looking at buying a 20-acre chunk of land, I go into the municipality, I read the ordinance, and it says I have to install sidewalks before I even put an offer on that property. My pro forma says I have to install sidewalks. They know that's an expense. They make that decision before they even put an offer on the property. If an ordinance says you may have to do two sides, you may have to do one side, you may not have to do it all, it really depends on what mood the planning board is in tonight. And that's not how we operate. I'm just hypothetically pretending I'm a developer. Then they don't have a good cost basis to do their original pro formas to determine if it's a feasible project or not. We're not going to decide this tonight. Essentially, I actually haven't even talked to Erin about this, but she put this on the agenda. I think it's wonderful, because what I want to start doing is having little discussions in preparation of major ordinance changes to come after the comp plan. There are some discussions that we really need to wait until after the comp plan to be had, related to the actual zones, because guidance coming out of the comp plan is going to help dictate actual zones. But there's lots of topics in the ordinance that are wildly out of date. Sidewalk discussion, pretty much every subdivision, this becomes a hot topic. If every time it becomes a hot topic, I think it's wrong. It needs to be adjusted somehow. Parking standards, another one that pretty much every subdivision comes in. Developers say, I don't need this much parking. They request a waiver, they get it. So I think we should start having small conversations on how do we right-size our parking? Is it saying we don't need any parking at all? Or is it saying maybe instead of two spaces per unit, essentially, you only need one? These are all conversations that we can start having on a small stab at the apple conversations. Instead of when the comp plan's done is we're all super excited because that's been taken a decade to get to, and we have a lot of work in front of us, and now all of a sudden, are we talking about the zone-specific things, but we're also talking about the rest of the chapter? So as the agendas are shorter, and we're not going until 10 o'clock at night, I would love to take 20 minutes every meeting and start doing these little discussions to get everybody's brainwaves going and help guide future discussions at the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee and Erin's thought process on starting to actually make thoughts on draft amendments. The codes office and planning office for decades now have been keeping notes of what's broken and what needs to be fixed. So we've got a lot of work ahead of us. I'm just trying to make it easier on essentially Erin when it comes down to draft a 300-page document, and we've already had some of these preliminary discussions so that she doesn't waste a whole lot of time drafting it to then say, nope, that's not what we were thinking about. I'd rather have a little bit of guidance going into it and then finishing the comp plan process, because again, a comp plan is guiding us for the next 10 to 20 years. If she knows, and we all know kind of what everybody's thinking about for the next 20 years, it's going to make that process even better.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I definitely appreciate that. The getting rid of as much ambiguity as we can. I think we've done quite a bit over the last couple of years in getting rid of ambiguity, whether it was getting rid of conditions and just streamlining a lot of things has been very helpful. This and parking are the two things that we obviously get pretty heated about, have lots of discussions on. So if we can do something to tighten those up to reduce the ambiguity, but still leaving some flexibility to allow for us to consider the, you know, the case like tonight with a really strange road and, you know, what have you. Right? So try to manage the exceptions, but treat them as exceptions, not as the norm, and make the norm broader where it needs to be. So I appreciate that. Any other thoughts on that for tonight?
It seemed like at one of the comp plan meetings that the city manager was all in favor of sidewalks, unless I misread him, but...
I think everybody's in favor of sidewalks. I think everybody understands the importance of sidewalks. I think the question comes when a developer comes and says, hey, I'm five miles from the nearest sidewalk. The likelihood of this ever connecting to something is really slim. You're going to make me spend $10 or $10 million installing a sidewalk system.
Yeah, and that's, I think, related to our zoning, and we'll see it change after the comprehensive plan. We might be able to tailor it a little more, you know, especially when if the urban zone changes. I feel like almost all of our issues have been in the residential development zone because they're outskirts, you know, and they're not easily connected. You know, and I've seen other options that help with safety, because like, if you have a narrow road and you have parking on the road, and now all of a sudden you're having to walk on the inside of the parked cars, that's a huge safety concern. I live in a development in town. There's no sidewalks, but the roads are 15 feet wider than they need to be, and that allows for pedestrian...
At least during the summer.
Well, so the problem is in the wintertime, the sidewalks don't get maintained ever. So that's the other...I like the wider road because the snowbanks get pushed back more, whereas the sidewalks don't get maintained, and the people are walking in a narrow road. So it's...I've had a huge issue with sidewalks in the winter because they don't get maintained.
So I love to give credit where credit's due. I would also publicly say that the Public Works Department this winter has done a better job at maintaining our sidewalks. We have been short-staffed now for many years, and I have personally noticed driving around that this winter appears to...I'm not going to say every sidewalk's plowed within five hours of a storm, but I want to give them a little bit of credit that I feel sidewalks were better maintained this year than in years past.
So Public Works doesn't bother me. I mean, it doesn't scare me as much as a private subdivision, and them maintaining a sidewalk or a walkway or a pathway or...
And then enforcing that.
Correct, because they would internally enforce it. And I think what you would find is people just won't care.
Okay.
That was great.
So we're not going to solve this tonight.
That's okay.
But I appreciate the discussion. Planning Director's Report?
So before the Planning Director's Report, I...we had a design review committee meeting. I guess it was last Wednesday. And I was politely reminded that we lost a design review committee member when...
Crystal.
Crystal, thank you. I already forgot her name. Sorry, Crystal.
It's good that you remember her name.
Crystal departed. So Todd has volunteered to be another planning board rep to the design review committee, so I'm going to request that you guys formally appoint him as a design review committee member.
I nominate Todd. Second.
All in favor?
All in favor. Raise your hand, Todd.
Seven zero.
Congratulations, Todd.
Thank you. Don't tell me why.
I was reminded when we almost didn't have a quorum, and I'm like, why don't we have any people here? And I'm like, oh, wait, we lost people.
Crystal had great attendance.
Okay, Planning Director's Report. As always, thank you to the board. Thank you to our newest member, Margie, for volunteering her time and commitment to Wednesday nights to the city of Sanford. I've known her for a few years now, working through various things here in the town, and I think she is going to be a fantastic fit to the board. Thank you to planning board and staff for all of their hard work. I continue to say I feel we are doing a pretty good job as a team. I think we're doing good for the city of Sanford. I think we're doing good for developers. I think we're getting there. We still have work to go. I think that's a good thing. I think we will continue forever to revise our ordinances, revise our processes, and I'm very proud of how far we've come, and I'm looking forward to how much further we can go. Projects are still coming in. We're rapid-fire pre-apps. As I've said for the last couple of weeks, Jan's keeping us all pretty busy. But so I think where development is going to continue. I have publicly said I'm a little bit worried with all that's going on in the world, how development could sustain the rapid pace it has for the last few years. But we seem pretty resilient to everything, and activity both in the codes and the planning office is still as strong as ever. So there is no signs of slowdown as of yet. Thank you all.
All right. Thank you. Since Crystal isn't here...oh, is there any communications?
Yes. Next meeting, there is...there could be a quorum issue if...because I will be...and I most likely won't be here. Tom's pretty much guaranteed to not be here.
Yeah, I'll be on travel, Matt.
It should be April 2nd.
Yeah.
Checking their calendar.
So I just wanted to make sure that no one else had a planned absence because we would get into a quorum issue...well, we'd be close to a quorum issue.
And with that said, the two chair and vice chair will be absent, so that means the secretary will be up for the duties of chair that night.
You're right, yeah. Okay, great.
Okay. Any other communications from anyone?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?